I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is a continued public hearing with 13 Horseshoe Drive. Ms. Corcello is looking to allow a front yard setback of 30 feet where 50 is required for installation of a gazebo in the front yard. I would move for opening the public hearing.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Ms. Corcello here?
Yes.
Aye, please.
I'm here.
Can you, good to see you again, could you refresh us again with what you're seeking, please?
Yes, I'm seeking to put a 10-foot octagon gazebo at the corner of my house, still pretty much, almost, in the front yard, but almost towards the side. That would look similar to this screened in. I was last here explaining that it would look similar to this, pretty much. It would be part of all the gardens that I have at the house now, which the gentleman can tell you was tons. I don't have a front porch and I don't have a deck and this would become similar to having, like, a small front porch for myself. I have talked to neighbors, they're all fine. I have a neighbor who actually wrote a letter, he was the one with the dogs. He's the one, one of the reasons that I started this whole thing. They have two dogs that if I go where I used to have one of those $300 gazebos on the side of my house, they continually bark. They're nice dogs, they're great with their seven-year-old kid, but as soon as they see me, they're barking. My neighbor next door said, if you want, I can bring it up, you can read it.
You want to submit that to them?
Do you have a copy of that?
No, this is the first I'm hearing.
Yeah, we'd like gifts.
Yeah.
Give to her.
He's the ones with the dogs and he's like...
Please.
You gotta speak into the microphone, please.
He's the ones with the dogs and he stated that I have no idea why they're giving you such a hard time, I think it would look beautiful anyway, but I understand your reasoning behind it and he said, "I'll write you a letter." I mean, come on, you're being a good neighbor and, you know, this is gonna be good for you. I have neighbors across the street, they don't really care. They all said the same thing, I don't understand why they're giving you a hard time, they're a gardener, everything will be absolute, it'll be so pretty, especially when I finish with the roses and the whole bit around it. Now, last time I was here, and just recently, when they checked my backyard, because they keep saying I should put it on the side towards the back of my house, very nice, and I keep explaining to people that this is built very, very well, it's built by the Amish, it gets delivered on a flatbed. It literally can come on my driveway, drop it right there, I mean, seriously, it's five steps from my front door. It's not the middle of my front yard, it's not the end of my front yard, it's literally in an area where practically, except my neighbor across the street, can actually see it. And Ann across the street doesn't care, she says, "Do it, it'll look pretty, I know you and it's gonna look really gorgeous." Now, I have other pictures of, which I'm used to.
Sure.
Someone told me to drive around and look at other stuff that's actually built on front yard. Do I give it to her?
Yes, please.
Okay. There you go. This is a church in Hyde Park, they have a gazebo, it's in the front of their yard, as you can see, it's near a lake. This is a guy that has this here, and from what I understand, from when the gentleman here has several sheds.
I would show that to the board because they're the ones to make the decision.
Okay, they told me to give it to you, that's why.
Oh, okay.
And we have other, this is all their front yard, they have other things built. And this guy, somebody I know...
Ms. Corcello?
Is...
Sorry to interrupt, but if you could just show those to the board?
Sure.
And then we'll just need copies given to the GBA clerk, thank you.
Who do we get first?
Let's start with...
You can start at the end, yes.
This is a gazebo that's on the side of his house, more towards the front, and it's on a cliff, this is actually really dangerous because it's old, number one, he bought it old and he told me the whole history of it. I guess he had an older home and then built a newer home, but it's there. This is neighbors that also have stuff constructed in the front of their yard, I think it's beautiful, it is artwork and it's for gardens and it's beautiful.
This is off to the side, though.
That's the front of his house, right there, that's where you come out, the front door.
Is that a, are these kind of structures, are these...
Like chelices for a garden?
Yep, chelices and, yeah, they have all kinds of stonework and chelices and, yeah. And then we have a shed that literally is in front of his property, another gazebo that's on the front of the property of the church.
Ms. Corcello, where are these properties in relation to your house?
Right in town.
No, in relation to your house?
In relation to my house?
Yeah.
Oh, one of them right around the corner. I also was told that, the reason I keep explaining to them that I do not want to put it on the side towards the back of my house, because literally the middle of my lawn is gas lines and I've been told, "Well, they have ways to do it." No, this explains to you, you cannot drive trucks over gas lines, tells you right there. Bury gas lines in front yards can be dangerous, potentially lead to leaks, explosions and fires.
Where is this from, though?
Internet. I also called Central Hudson. Unfortunately, they said, "Oh yeah, you don't want to drive over," but they didn't have time to send me a letter.
Oh my God. This is the...
I knew that years ago, because as a child, there was a house in Austin, New York that blew up due to a fact that a truck drove over the front yard, because Austin is all underground gas line.
We had a, also had an opportunity, a number of our members did a visit, a site visit.
Yes.
Would you like to make any comments or you did as well, questions you have?
Well, I certainly appreciate your position, but...
Microphone.
The fact of the matter is that our code gives you other methods for solving the problem that you have, is the dogs barking, and you probably should pursue that first.
Okay, considering that, my neighbor next door is really upset with the fact that my town hall given me a hard time to do something that's very beautiful, very, very well-made, better than that guy on the cliff, so if I can't have it, that should definitely not be there because that's really dangerous, mine would never be dangerous, but the fact, I actually mentioned to him, they want me to call the police on dogs, and he goes, "I cannot believe that..."
Well, actually, if you've read chapter 45, it would suggest that you do need that first call, but after that, then you would put a complaint in with the court and you would take them to court and they would have to discipline their dogs.
Well, they're trying, and you know what? They're trying a lot. That's not the point, the point is, I come here, town hall, people come here...
The point, the point is that the dogs are a temporary situation, a variance is a permanent thing.
Well, yes and no?
And we have to give the minimum amount to people and they have to pursue all the avenues available to them before we do that. That's, that's simple facts.
So what was the available thing that that person did to put that huge oval one on a cliff in front of his house? It's not in the back, it's not behind the side.
It did not come in front of this board, so we can't comment on that, so...
That came before what?
Did not, did not come here.
It did not come before, in front of the GBA.
Like we meant the zoning setbacks, not requiring a variance.
So if we went back to the old, because my house isn't even 50-foot, my house is not even 50-foot, and I'm not asking, they're saying 30 here, I've measured it myself and it's more like 45 from the beginning of where that should be, because it's so close to my house.
But it's a 10-foot diameter.
Yeah, 10-foot, that's what I'm talking about, the beginning of the 10-foot, not the back of it, the front.
Right, so if your property is within 50 feet from the front yard, it would be more than...
But my property is not. You see, they changed the variance after they even put all, every, my, I have the longest front yard there, everybody else has a shorter front yard. My house isn't even 50 feet, so I don't, you know, I don't understand how something so pretty and small and yet we're having such a hard time with this, and it's not permanent. The fact is, it can be lifted.
If it's that pretty and small, you could probably move it to the backyard.
And drive a truck over.
And then you won't, then you can meet all the requirements that the zoning currently provides.
So in other words, if I want something that's so sweet and so nice, I'm not allowed to have it because other people have other stuff built in front of their yards and that's okay?
There are different circumstances for every parcel in the town.
Really?
I think if you drive down, I've driven down this street, in fact, I drove down it today, this morning, in fact, you were out in the yard. There's not another gazebo or other thing out in any of the yards there.
Yeah, down the street. A pergola in the front, as you walk in.
So...
Did you go down that way?
I went, I came off at nine and...
Central Hudson also could not understand how the Hyde Park Town Board could literally argue the point that I should drive trucks over my front yard with gas lines. My neighbor next door, Alex and his brother, they're, they're sitting there going, "Really? Do you know what that would do to our house?" I said, "Yeah." I said, "You're giving me..." Because you want to make sure that it goes in the backyard, it's not where I want it, I want to be able to come out and have coffee in it, but you want me to come out, go around the bushes, all the way around to the other side, which of course, no truck should drive over.
If you had, if there was no dog next door, would you put it in the backyard?
Well, if it wasn't the dogs next door, I wouldn't even have gotten the idea, because I would've just left whatever I had there before, and then I got this idea and yet now I really want it because I don't have decks and I don't have a front porch, which, if you take the neighbor down the street, his front porch is wider than where my gazebo would be. But wait, because it's attached to the house, it's okay? Should I, should I build a little piece of wood thing, platform where I walk from this to the gazebo, which will be prettier, by the way, than his front porch? Because that's why you have one here, because it's pretty, people put them in parks. My neighbors think because of all the flowers, it would look like a park. I've designed something like this before in Stormville. I've had caterers wanting to rent my backyard. Now, the backyard in my house is beautiful and I do love it.
And what happens if you put this in the front yard, if we were to give you that variance and the dog still barks?
No, well, you see, I've already tested that, because the fact is, I've actually put a table and chair set there and gate there just to see if that would work. I'm on a corner where even where their little gate starts, they can't. I've tested it all, trust me. I wouldn't even think, this thing would cost me $7,000, do you think? If they could bark at me, I wouldn't even want it. I wouldn't want it at all.
I don't have any more.
My neighbor across the street also said, "You call her, she has no problem, she's the one that we see it the most." She says, "Carol, I don't have a problem, anything would be pretty."
April, question?
Yeah, I guess more of a question in terms of precedence, so has a precedent already been set? We don't know based on the evidence that was just presented to us, or would this, or would granting a use for variance in this case create a precedence?
It will.
So each property is considered individually, however, where, for instance, in a neighborhood, there's a precedent of accessory structures in the front yard, that would be under consideration for this board and it would be more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, it would go toward the factors.
Yeah, I think the character of the neighborhood is, is a concern here.
Certainly.
This would be a single issue in terms of that street and that neighborhood. Other questions? Are there anybody else from the public who would like to make comments?
I can tell you, I talked to at least five of my neighbors and they all said the same thing, why are they giving you such a hard time? It will look absolutely pretty and it will actually benefit the look of my house, who I moved in and looked very rundown.
Have we, Madam Secretary, have we received any other comments from neighbors other than what we've just received?
No, we have not.
We have not, okay, all right. Are there any other questions? Counsel?
Nothing for me.
Okay, then I would, I would move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, considering all of that, and we appreciate what you have presented to us, we do have a resolution here. Resolution for Carol Corcello, 13 Horseshoe Drive, Hyde Park, New York, dated May 28, 2025, resolution 2025-...
Motion and seconded.
Motion and seconded.
I'm moving.
Oh, he hasn't moved yet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
He's gotta read it first.
That's okay, it's all right.
I'm anxious.
Whereas the applicant and property owner, Carol Corcello, has submitted an application for an area variance to construct a gazebo in the front of the house at the property located at 13 Horseshoe Drive, Hyde Park, New York, identified as tax parcel number 606408896828 in the neighborhood zoning district, whereas the applicant seeks an area variance from the zoning law, section 108.5.15, to permit a front yard setback of 30 feet where 50 feet is required. And whereas pursuant to NYCRR617-5C17, the granting of an area variance for a single-family, two-family, or three-family residence is a type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, it is not subject to a review under this act. Whereas, whereas, now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with the section 267B of the town law and the Hyde Park zoning law, section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. Number one, the requested variance will produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. The requested variance will result in an undesirable change in the neighborhood as there are no neighboring properties which have accessory structures within their front yards. In order to maintain the character of the neighborhood, the applicant should seek to install the gazebo in the backyard of the property. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The variance is not necessary because the applicant has the ability and space to install the gazebo in the backyard of the property. Moreover, the gazebo can be placed in an area in the backyard which will comply with the required zoning setbacks. Number three, requested variance may be considered numerically substantial, requested variance would be charged, change the permitted side yard setback from 50 feet to 30 feet, which is a decrease of 40% for the construction of the gazebo. Four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district, decreasing the front yard setback requirement to allow a variance of 20 feet so a gazebo can be built would not have a negative impact on the existing environmental conditions. Five, difficulties are self-created, the applicant can install the gazebo on an area of the property that would eliminate the need for a variance. Be it further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby denies the requested variance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Madam Secretary, would you pull the board, please?
Yes. So a yes vote is saying yes to deny, just to be clear before I pull the board.
That is correct.
So Ms. Daly?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes. Motion is carried, we deny the request for variance, I hope that you can find a solution in terms of your backyard.
I would like the committee here to explain to me how a flatbed is supposed to go into my backyard. I think it's my decision on not having somebody, this gazebo would be 10 times better built than what you have out here, which is rickety compared to what I've seen by the Amish. So please explain to me, when you're telling me I can put it in my backyard, how a flatbed is supposed to go there and do that?
Ms. Corcello, the alternative solutions, that's up to you, however, if people want to carry it, however you want to do, the board does not have to answer these questions, their reasoning is in the resolution and you'll be...
Well, you have to answer because they're telling me.
Excuse me, you'll be provided a copy of the resolution that explains the board's reasoning. You'd like to challenge this resolution and the denial, you can file an article 78.
No, no, you just, I'm gonna tell you something, since this has started, which is now going on for like over two months and I've been trying to, there was someone in the office of the variance who runs the computer next to Kathy, who literally told me, "Just order it." I told her, "No, I'm doing everything right, I will not order this because what happens if they tell me no?" Your own employees told me to order this, $7,000 gazebo, which I am going to borrow money to do because it's something I really wanted, which you guys just didn't care about. You took a dream, I love gazebos, this would be my front porch, so what happens now if I want a front porch, it's gonna go, oh, all the way where that gazebo would have ended.
Ms. Corcello, I appreciate your, your situation, but I think we've completed the business tonight and we appreciate you coming.
Oh, you shut me off. Another thing is my neighbor would like to remind you that because of this committee, three houses down, we had a leaky roof, he wanted a building permit, you guys took two months to do it, until it collapsed on him and his father he takes care of in this dining room. I don't know who, where did my $550 go? What did that? Who went and literally made you guys go? But I can guarantee you, if your son wanted something or your sister wanted something, it would have been done, and you know it and I know it, and that's why I have three neighbors right now that will put in $30,000 kitchens and bathrooms and will never, ever. You're supposed to protect people, like that gazebo on that cliff, which you're doing nothing about because maybe, maybe somebody knows somebody, that is dangerous.
Thank you very, thank you very much, I'm gonna have to ask you to complete, thank you.
I love you. Thank you for destroying somebody who really wanted something and dreams.
All right, next item, we begin with new public hearings. Hospice 202503Z, 425 Violet Avenue, seek a variance to allow an increase in scale from the previous granted variance of 30,000 square feet from the required 6,000 feet to 33,402 square feet to allow 21 additional parking spaces at the hospice. Madam Chairman, is the, was the public hearing notice published?
Yes, in the Poughkeepsie Journal on May 21, 2025.
Thank you, I would move to open the public hearing, is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome back. Could you state your names again for the record, please? I know, we know it, but the record doesn't.
Michelle Zurfus, Berger Engineering.
Okay.
Michael Kaminski, President and CEO, Hudson Valley Hospice.
Well, welcome. Can you just sort of summarize again what you're asking this board to consider as a variance?
When we first planned Hudson Valley Hospice with 14 beds, we really didn't know how many parking spaces we'd need. We developed a plan with 29 spaces, now that all 14 beds are open, we find that both staff and visitors, and visitors are allowed to stay 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they can bring as many visitors as they want to be with the patient overnight, on weekends, et cetera. We vastly underestimated the number of parking spaces that we need to avoid people parking on the grass or in the driveway. So we've come up with a plan to build another 21 spaces on the south side of the building along the driveway contiguous or picking up from where the spaces are already established.
So this would expand, are these pervious or impervious?
They...
Asphalt.
Will be going with asphalt.
So they're perv, they're, they're impervious?
Yes.
So you're adding to the imperviousness of the, of the property?
Correct. I know in your plans it says the porous pavers, but since you got your plans, I did the drainage study and it doesn't change...
Can you put the microphone a little closer to you, please?
On your plans, it says porous, porous pavers, but since then, I did the drainage study and it doesn't change the discharge to go with regular pavement.
So your assessment is that the, adding this square feet will not impact the drainage of the property?
No, the, the pre-post, the post-runoff rate is still the same as the, or it's less than the pre.
Okay, and was originally, there, you have a retention pond in the back?
Yes.
That originally was to be a dry pond?
Way back and then it went to a wet pond in the middle of construction. There's not really any difference between a dry pond and a wet pond, except what the...
Except the wet pond has a lot more water in it.
Well, it has water down, but the storage is always above the water surface or above the ground surface.
As I drove by today, I saw that you have about a foot left of the, of the top of that.
Yes.
Right now?
Yeah, because it's such a wide, it's gotta widen up overflow that, that doesn't affect anything.
Right, we're keeping the water back from going downstream.
Right, although I think we've had some instances where the water has gone downstream.
Well, water is allowed to go downstream, the DEC requires that you control the rate at which you discharge. So you do a study, first figuring out what the rate of discharge off the site was before you, before you did, you know, before you did work, and then what the rate will be after the work is done, and your rate afterwards cannot exceed the rate before, so the post-rate cannot be greater than the pre-rate, and we've taken care of that and that's always been the case, the original design was that way.
It's my understanding that the town's engineer is working with you to discuss some work with some drainage issues, can you tell us about...
Yeah, he's, he's talking about a site that's over 1,300 feet away and at the bottom of 32 acres. Hospice is seven acres at the top, or almost at the top, there's actually 10 acres above Hospice along East Dorsey up at Dollar General that drain onto the hospice site, and then we've got the seven acres, and then below that is a huge amount of land before you get to where the town engineer is concerned.
So there's, there's still a question in terms of, is the drainage set properly to prevent flooding in the neighborhood? The engineers are looking at that, is that my understanding?
Yes, and the, and the engineer, consultant, consultant in town brought in told us that we had met for the, for the original, the design before these parking spaces, that we met the DEC requirements. I rechecked for the additional 3,400 or 3,200 square feet of asphalt and we still meet the DEC requirements.
I guess as we look at this, when you're, you're adding roughly 10% to the amount of property covered and you're putting it in pervia, impervious surface.
We're adding 10% to the scale, not to the site, the site's almost seven acres.
Right, but it's concentrated in that area.
It's, yes, it's, it's, we put it in... So this is the site here, and we are down, the building's right in here.
Right.
We left a buffer here for the neighbors on East Dorsey. All of this drains into the site, and then it drains through our site and it goes down another 1,300 feet.
Okay, I'm missing something, 1,300 feet, I'm sorry.
Between our property and the property downstream, that's, that's accusing us of flooding them, are 1,300 feet away.
Yeah, and it's, it's not 1,300 feet in a nice clean channel, it's 1,300 feet wandering through woods and through two different ponds.
Okay.
I got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So you took the water that was coming onto the site and all the water on the site, you managed that and gave a projection of what's coming off the site, and does that, there's, there's some lots here, A, C, D, E, F and G.
Yeah.
Whereabouts is the outflow?
The outflow is in the corner between G and I.
Between G and what?
I, G and I.
Oh, oh, right here, okay.
Right in that corner.
And is there a problem there?
Nope.
Okay, so then there's accumulated water beyond your border that gets added to what's coming off the site. that gets added to what is being distributed by your carefully metered release?
Yes.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
That's, that's...
There's, there's also drainage from south of our site.
That's, that's what I was...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, south and east of our site.
Yep.
East Dorsey, right.
Was that drainage coming to your property?
No, no, there's, there's, uh, we have, we have seven acres. There's thirty acres that are draining to, down to this, downstream to this, uh, uh, East Dorsey property. But, but then there's ten acres above us that does drain it onto us.
That didn't leave before.
Right.
So basically, is there a, a number that, the amount of water that was leaving before? Like gallons per hour or liters?
Yeah, cubic feet per second.
Cubic feet per second? And what was that?
Um, I didn't bring it with me. I didn't get it back from the printer in time. They, I sent it to them. It's been, I emailed it to the town, but I haven't gotten it, the printed copies back. But it was...
So it, it's...
The it, the it is being referred to as an update of the report on what the drainage is now that we've, we've increased the, the size of the dam by the pond.
So that the water that's leaving is less than or equal to the water that left before you started?
Yeah, the rate. And also to let you know that about a year ago, we met with the town engineer and he said, okay, you know, we said, well, we've met the DEC requirements. He asked us, can you exceed the DEC requirements? And in good faith, hospice went and modified the pond. We also modified the bio-retention. Before, the bio-retention had an underdrain. So when water going down through the bio-retention getting the underdrain in, it would go to the pond. We've now blocked that so that all the water that goes into the bio-retention below, well, we did two things. We blocked the outlet and we raised the overflow. So instead of six inches, there's now a foot. So all the water that goes in that bio-retention below that foot will just stay there and it'll go down into the, its fractured shale underneath. So we've actually subtracted that. Hospice has already subtracted that water out. They also modified the pond to reduce the amount, it's, I can say it's rate, but they also put in pipes instead of, before it was just an overflow where, it still met the requirements, but they, they put in the pipes to allow a little more time in the pond.
'Cause the overflow could raise, but going through the pipes won't get any bigger.
Right, yeah, the head will get bigger so that, so hospice is actually a year ago, a little over a year ago, went in and already made modifications that were asked for and we submitted that report. And I don't, haven't heard back really regarding that report.
Okay.
Um, it's my understanding that the town engineer's current position is that, uh, you should update your SWIP. Is that something that, uh, you plan on doing?
It was, we already submitted it to the planning board. That's the thing that I submitted on Tuesday. Emailed it on Tuesday.
Got it.
Today's Wednesday. Emailed it yesterday. I sent it to the printer yesterday, but it's a hundred and twenty-five pages.
Understood.
And the printer just didn't get to the, I was gonna have fifteen copies, but you guys can have two copies.
It's good to know, thanks.
It's okay.
So, so just to let you know that it's, you know, it's, it's, and that's double, and it'll be double sided, so you get a two sixty-page reports.
So I think what we'd like to, you know, wait to hear what, you know, their consideration at this point. I, we, I think we understand what you're looking for.
That's what we have to do. We have to wait for their SWIP.
And if I can just add that, um, the people on East Dorsey, this is Dollar General and the people on here?
Yeah.
Their water drains onto our site, not ours, onto theirs.
Their water, say that again, their water?
Their, their water drains onto our site.
Drains this way.
The water drains north onto our site. And part of the original design, we put in a big inlet structure to collect their water and then there's a bypass pipe to send it around. And that's, that's these, that's these lots along East Dorsey.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
But that's questions?
I'm sorry.
Cycles?
Yeah. Yeah, I think as we, as we wait for, for the planning to do that, uh, we talked about it before, but we hadn't done it. We'd like to come out and...
Certainly anytime where...
And we'll bring our swimming suits and...
Feed, feed the geese and the ducks that like the pond.
No, it's a, it's a very nice pond, I mean, in terms of how you've laid it out. Uh, so Madam Secretary, if we could schedule that, I think that would be, we'd like to do that. Certainly within the next couple of weeks.
Michelle, do you have a map that just shows the contour lines of the whole area?
That would be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's...
Not, not only, I'm, I'm sure in your study, you also included beyond just your property.
'Cause I, I think I looked at them when Dollar General was there and I, I thought that was gonna be a problem, but, um, 'cause there's, there is some places that are...
Yes, and, and so when we were doing the, going through the planning board original, we met with the, some of the neighbors that are above us because they were worried that we were gonna block their drainage path. And they said that there's actually, they, they told us that there's an underdrain going through their, their yards to collect water that, 'cause there's a little bit of a low back there that goes into hospice. And up at the southwest corner of hospice, there's, it's kinda like a little ditch, existing pond. And that's where we put our outlet structure so that we could take their water faster.
Oh, okay, good. That helps them.
So in your...
So they're taking, the water that's coming this way, they're taking this a little faster. They, they clean this up.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, I think we're clear on that and we'll need to, we'll need to proceed. But before we do that, we have, uh, we'd like to see if other people from the public would like to make some comments.
Yes, excuse me, Chair. I have a list of people who signed up to speak. I'd like to just call them up.
Okay.
If that's possible. So Susan from thirty-five East Dorsey, come on up and speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity.
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Susan DeGioio. I live at thirty-five East Dorsey Lane.
Thirty-five East, okay.
I am property number letter M on their site map.
Oh, I wondered who that was.
It's me.
Okay.
I, um, overall, hospice has been lovely neighbors. However, when that, uh, fencing was put up, which is a beautiful fence and there's a little bit of a berm and there were trees planted there and bushes as a kind of a buffer to my privacy? And if they're gonna take all of that out and put twenty-one more parking spots in that same area, I am concerned then that my drainage will, will be an issue. And cars coming in and out?
I can't, I can't...
People talking?
I'm not sure.
Um, I don't see why the parking spots can't be sited closer to Route nine G rather than behind the building.
Okay, so the question, I understand, if I understand correctly, right next contiguous to your property, is there a burn and there's planting? And your concern is that that will be taken away as we...
It looks like it on the map. On the map, it says trees being removed.
The trees are being shifted to blow through the fence.
Uh, sorry, excuse me, if you could just grab the microphone. Can you come in?
The, the parking spots look like they're gonna be right along the fence.
Uh, the, the parking will be along the fence. The fence is actually inside the property. There's still a buffer between the fence and the property line. And where it says the trees are gonna be shifted, which are a little, right now they're small, they're just gonna be pushed closer to the fence.
So the fence will still remain, the burn will still remain, the plantings will still remain?
Here it is, right here.
Yeah, yeah, just...
Trees will be shifted towards the fence.
Towards the fence. And then the backside of the fence, there's, right now, it's fairly clear is sort of a wooded area. That's gonna remain wooded brush area.
Okay. Is that, do you...
I, I'm just concerned that the, uh, the additional traffic in the back of the building is gonna be invasive and, um, the visitors should be accessing the building by the front door, not the side door. And I think it would be more, uh, easy for the visitors to access the building if the parking was closer to the front.
Guys, I'm listening.
Um, if I could address that, the visitor parking will be the front. This is for the staff. Who can go in the side doors.
Right now, there's, uh, on that side, I believe, there's about seven parking spots that are existing. And I drove through there today and it just looks like the additional parking spots are just gonna go completely around it. And I don't know, talking about drainage, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know how that's gonna affect everything.
This will stay, okay. The shrub on the fence is stationed, so they're just gonna put it closer here.
I'm just looking at where your property is in relation to the parking spots.
Yeah, I, what I see is the fence remaining, the shrubs, some will be moved, but they'll still be on their side of the fence. So you'll still have that barrier there.
The, the shrubs will be pushed back towards the fence?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's...
Okay.
But they'll still be on the side of, of the hospice property?
And it will still be between the proposed parking spaces and your property.
Okay. Okay.
It looks like they're not moving the fence. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the fence is not moving. Okay.
And when you go on the site visit, you'll see clearly.
I understand that.
Okay.
We'll take a look.
There'll be like additional runoff from that roadway though.
We're taking your concern in...
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it very much.
Next on the list is Mark Litas.
Hi, I'm Mark Litas. I live at eight Davis Place, which is on the other side of the property, on the north side.
That's over here. Um... Do you know which letter you are?
I do not. I haven't seen the map. It's...
I think, I think he's gonna show you right now.
Uh, it would be F.
F, okay.
Yes. I'm not sure exactly where this parking is going to be located.
Parking, yeah, if I understand correctly, be on the other side...
On the opposite side?
Other side of the property. From you.
Okay, it's not gonna affect me, but I just wanna say that the, the current parking, the woman that just spoke was talking about the trees that they planted along there for her privacy. They didn't do that on our side. I would, I'm just here tonight to make sure there was gonna be no more lights because the lights from the existing parking, uh, it's almost like daylight in my backyard in the middle of the night. And as far as the water, I don't have any problem, so.
Okay, so lighting, now the parking will be on the other side, but the existing.
Okay.
Any, any comment?
So are the lights the ones that point down or have a cover on them or anything?
Nope. They're square and they, and the light all comes right out.
There'll be... The light on...
Into my windows and into my backyard.
The light on the, on the house side is blocked. We, we put filters on that side, that side of the light.
Why don't you sit up at their table so everything can get recorded properly? So the people can, help the audience can hear and the people on TV can hear.
You couldn't hear me?
No, no, but why don't you sit up there, both of you, so when people come up, there's a lot of people that would like to speak.
Well, I, we don't control the meeting, sir.
Well, I'm, I'm just making that as a suggestion.
What I said was that there's a filter on the, the side of the light that faces the houses. We put that in before we opened because of the complaints from the neighbors on that side.
Has that not been taken care of, sir? In your...
I, I only see one. There's one light that's directly behind my house and they put like a shield on it. The, the other lights all, I mean, this time of year, some of the neighbors have trees, when the leaves are on the trees, it's, it's not a big deal, but...
In the winter.
When the leaves are off the trees, it's, the whole, the whole side of my house is lit up, or the back of the house, I should say.
Suggest that, yes, we might go and the shield, come, come on up. If they grab a seat.
Rich, Dave. Yeah, yeah, you mean to come up to the table?
Yeah, come on up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That way people can look at the plans as well. It looks like that's a helpful reference.
Go ahead, Paul.
Um, excuse me, sir. What, what address are you again?
Yeah.
F, no, no, the address.
Eight Davis Place.
Eight Davis. Um, you said there was no, there was trees that they're deciduous, so in, in the, in the wintertime?
Trees that are on my, my property.
Could hospice plant any like, uh, evergreens or evervites?
No, they did not.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, could that be something that we could do?
Well, we can look at it, but I, I don't know what size trees we'd need to satisfy the neighbors. I, we'd, we'd need to take a look at that.
Okay. All right. Anything else, sir?
I just wanna say that, uh, and I was actually told by somebody that, you remember who that guy was? He was from the town, right? Because, uh, he, he came over to the house when this building was being put in and there was large trees on the other side planted, evergreen trees, like full grown. And we asked for them to put some on our side. And he said, oh, we put those on the other side because we didn't wanna look at all those junk cars over there, 'cause there's an auto body repair shop on the other side.
Okay. Appreciate your question.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Next, Donna Hudak, please.
She's in... Uh, sure, just pull up another, sure.
It's nice to meet you in person. We run the Zoom calls. Um, Mike...
Wanna state your, state your name for the record, please, Donna?
I'm Donna Hudak and I'm at twenty-five East Dorsey Lane.
Twenty-five?
East Dorsey Lane.
Okay, let's see. We know which...
We know thirty, ma'am.
Chaucer. Yeah. So I'm Q. Q.
Oh, Q, okay.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Q right here. Oh, okay, right there. All right.
So my concern is always the drainage. And, um, so with the impervious service, you know, more impervious surfaces going in, that was a concern for me.
Can you speak a little louder, Donna?
Sure. Um, I was concerned with the parking, um, just because it would be an impervious surface and that would be more, um, a drainage concern. And even, um, with the snow, like if there were snowbanks and then it gets really, it could be even more water. Um, and then also the lighting, now since people have mentioned the lighting, there's one light that shines in my house, but other than that, I don't have a problem with the lighting. But my main concern is the drainage and also...
Have you seen any impact in your house from this?
We did have one, um, situation and that was during the construction and, but it got resolved.
Okay.
But it was just because the, um, the area that you had mentioned where, where all the water goes down, 'cause it's like a natural swale, right? In the backyard, all of our backyards. And so we, we all knew where it went, where it would, what's it called? The feed or something where it feeds into, where all the water feeds into?
The underdrain?
Yeah, the underdrain. Um, so we, we identified that when we walked through, um, before construction. And, um, the, the engineer, Pete Sotera, he made a note that that area could not be blocked.
Mm-huh.
It was blocked by con, the construction, and it became like a lake in, um, your backyard and, yeah, my backyard, it was.
But that's been resolved.
It's totally resolved, yes. It was resolved once the, once the construction people were alerted, and you were alerted, you know, it got fixed.
Okay.
And it dissipated right away.
My understanding is the water actually is flowing from your house into their property.
Mm-hmm, but it doesn't go, it goes underground. It's a, it's just a natural swale, it goes underground.
And it's always been like that.
And it's always been like that. That's always.
They would've known when they started the project.
Yeah, it's always been there.
So connecting that with your concern about the additional parking.
Mm-hmm.
If it's impervious or pervious.
Mm-hmm, I just would be worried that it would be more water in the ground. And then, because even in like the basements and stuff, water comes up, you know, in the basements, the dirt basements, and so it's just a, that's a concern.
Is that, is that something new, or is that something that you're living with?
Living with, um, but it seems to be more, um, since the Dollar General, actually, and the hospice house.
That's what I would've guessed.
From?
Dollar General.
From Dollar General?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Okay, whereas the water clearly is not flowing from the hospice site to you, it's flowing, you're flowing actually toward them.
It only flows from the hospice site if it were to get blocked in that.
Right, during construction, but that.
It's not blocked now.
Which is more my yard.
It's not blocked now, no.
Okay.
But, yeah. And other neighbors, like further up the road, they've also noticed that, that they have more water from the Dollar Gen, since the Dollar General.
So we'll need to, we'll need to look at that, that's part of our site visit there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause you know what, I know the, um, the drainage basin is supposed to help, right, whatever that's called.
The one on, on.
Um, for the Dollar General?
Oh, it puts it in, it puts it into the ground, I think, yeah.
It puts it into the ground, though, and there was never a basin like that when the Grange was there forever, so that's kinda interesting. But anyway, that's, so that's all I have, but I was just concerned, because to see that there would be more, you know, hard surfaces going in, that was just a concern.
There was actually a substantial knob there, and some of the water went across nine G, and it went across, uh, to the school before the Dollar General.
Oh, oh, okay, well, now it's coming down Dorsey Lane, so.
Hopefully it's not coming your property, okay.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you, thank you very much, Donna, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
And, and your colleague, are you, you have a house next door?
Yes, my name is Silvana Valina, I'm the next one on the list, but I was just talking at the same time, twenty-nine East Dorsey Lane, and I'm letter S.
S, oh, yeah, okay.
Oh, you're S.
You have the lake.
Yes, a big lake, lots of times.
The lake?
This is where they said the lake, when this got blocked.
Oh, I see, okay, okay, good. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Any other comments that we should hear?
I mean, I don't know if this has anything to do with this situation, but the property between mine and my neighbors, it does belong to hospice, it goes onto East Dorsey, and they don't use that entrance, which is good, because that'd be like right in front of my house, uh, but they don't really maintain it. My neighbor and I maintain it, so that's a concern also. Will they be maintaining it in the future?
Okay.
It sounds like a planning board.
Okay.
I know there've been people there zoning it out and putting like pink ribbons and yellow poles, but I don't know what they're doing with it.
Is that a part of, is that a part of the hospice property?
Yes.
Yes.
That little arm that's.
Oh, the little arm, oh.
Yes.
That juts out, yeah.
There, there was a tree that had fallen onto my property in the driveway, and I had to call like at least three, four times, because I couldn't go up my drive. I had to park in front of my driveway until they came and removed that tree.
Okay, all right.
So that's just a concern, you know, if the property's gonna be maintained, or if we need to maintain it, if you wanna give it to us for free and we'll maintain it, that's fine too.
Okay.
Sell it to you.
No, no selling.
All right, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, one dollar.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Neil Machina, you signed the list, but you're just here for the Leroy application, correct? That's okay. No problem. Next up, Devin Felix. And Danielle.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, I'm Devin Felix.
I'm Daniel Jezu.
And we live at sixty-five East Dorsey Lane, which is not on your map.
It's further down, we're.
We're the ones that collect the water.
From hospice.
We have, uh.
I've owned the house since two thousand twelve, been there, went through Sandy, never had a drop in my, in my basement. All of a sudden, I hear that their retention pond went in ever since then. It's after winter, like March, April, when we get the snow melt, and then that rain in April, ground's frozen, nothing comes, everything, I have video with the town of walking the whole thing right to their backyard.
Coming from the retaining pond or their wet pond.
What number were you?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. Um, we have documented it from the time that they started construction, up until now, we've been watching and trying to collect any data, like we haven't flooded this year, but that's because they made modi, they made modifications as well. Like she said, she went from six inches, put pipes in, now up to twelve, you know, but that was done in reference to us flooding.
And like I said, it's not like every time we get a rain, it's, the big, the worst time is after winter with the snow melt, and then the heavy rains in, in April. I had to go out and get a pump, and I ran a big three-inch pump for like twelve, thirteen hours at a clip, just to keep off.
And a two-inch electric pump for three months straight.
We definitely need to look at that in terms of.
I know there was, uh.
The planning board will need to.
Engineers were supposed to come out.
That's quite, I mean, that's a, that's a, you're an extraordinary distance.
We, we are, and there's a pond, a couple houses up from us, that it goes up, it fills that one.
Then the house on the corner.
Same side of the street, yep. If you walk from the back of the retention pond, you can follow the stream all the way down to the back of my house. And all I do, I sit the lowest, and I feel bad, I just keep the water moving, it doesn't really affect, my, my neighbors a little bit, they'll see, but I'm just trying to keep, I've woken up to a foot and a half, two feet of water in my basement, if I don't stand on top of it.
Horrible.
Yeah, no, restless nights, um.
I get PTSD when it rains now.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's a concern. We don't leave the home when it rains because of this.
Did you, how long ago did this happen?
It started three, four years ago. I, I don't remember the exact date.
The first date is, I have it right here.
How has it been this year?
This year wasn't bad, we didn't get that bad of a winter.
The first date.
It's the snow and, and the rain, like.
Was Friday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and we woke up at three fifty-two AM to a foot and a half of water in our basement. I lost a washer, a dryer, a deep freezer, a fridge, uh, furniture, you know, a foot and a half of water destroys a lot. Um, and I have that documented, um, from April eighth, let's see, to.
I think the last one was maybe last year.
So A- April twenty-second, uh, two thousand twenty-two.
Mm. We flooded, we woke up to.
Yeah.
Okay.
To water.
To no heat in the house, water.
Since then?
Since then.
We've had two years since then of water.
Pumping water.
From March and April.
Last year wasn't too bad, we did have to pump a little bit.
We did.
This year was actually pretty good, because we didn't get the snow that we usually get around here, you know.
So this is a, a concern going in with the parking spaces?
This is beyond our usual purview.
No, 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 that's.
You, you probably wanna go to the planning board and.
You will.
Well, yeah, no, I just wanted, before they open up and start something new, I want the original thing fixed, please.
No, we appreciate that, very much. Uh, we clearly need, I mean, it's a mystery, but we need to.
I mean, we'll look at it, 'cause we're nosy.
Okay, no, I have, I have documentation, um, I'm also with my councilman, um, I've gotten Pete Sotero, um, was doing topo.
Have you, have you, could you share that information with us?
We don't have it personally.
My councilman has all that. I have, uh, I have emails and stuff, I can get the email, and I will send everything over.
Send it to our, yeah, very much.
Yup, and, uh, if we would like to continue on this matter, you know, at another date, I understand.
Okay.
You know.
We're on it.
Thank you.
We appreciate that, yeah. No, nobody wants water in their basement at all.
No, no, it percolates up through the floor, um, it's done a number to the house.
I dug at my house, probably illegally, a ten-foot deep ditch.
We, we've actually did dig a, a, a pond, a receiving pond.
We had to dig a trench just to keep more water.
And then because of the level of the water, we actually, in the back of the garage, you will see that we used the shovel entrenched to try to move water more, so it's away from the house to the even lower spot.
Yep.
Um.
But then it's floating out our septic.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So it, it's, it's not just one problem, it's, it's a, it's just a.
Clearly, it's a, yeah, very serious. Thank you very much for, for sharing your.
Of course, thank you.
Very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker I have signed up is Mr. John Lombardi.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
John.
So this has been an ongoing discussion for, for a long, long period of time. Um, I, I don't know how it got to the ZBA board um, in regards to these parking spots. We met with, uh, Michael here, uh, me and the supervisor, we, um, had Pete Sotero, we had, uh, CPL, we had, um, Joe Berger, uh, over to hospice, uh, voicing our concerns that there's major flooding that is caused by this so-called retention pond. Um, it's our understanding that, uh, when they did the drilling or the initial testing of the, where this retention pond was go, going, they hit, um, rock, but there was no water, and the rock was not solid. Um, talking to Pete Sotero, he reached out to the contractor that did the job, and when they started excavating for the retention pond, they hit solid rock and water percolated out of the ground. Um, that's how we kind of figured there was a shift in, uh, overnight in, in the plan of going from a, a dry to a wet, or however you wanna call it, but that's really not the, really not the main factor here. The main factor here is that the downhill people are, where that retention pond is located, the water comes over the spillway down into the height, the old height property next door, which goes into their retention pond, fills up, goes into another area, and then goes across their driveway and ends up into the Danny Deje's property, and it's a low point, which he's forced to pump, and continuously pump. What I'm frustrated about is a couple things. I'm frustrated about, I just had Pete Sotero on the phone, he is on vacation. I don't know where we came up with this word that we're DEC compliant, um, and that's what, uh, this young lady here said, um, that, uh, the engineer or our town engineer said, that statement is absolutely false. The second statement that really aggravates me is, I think that Mr. Berger ought to be here today, because we had many conversations, and we told him that we don't wanna proceed with these parking lots, spaces, and we don't want nothing to happen on this site, till we're all on the same page. And as far as I was under the understanding is, that the engineers were supposed to meet, go over all the calculations, find out if there's an error, or if there isn't an error, and report back to the planning board, so we can have further discussions on how we're gonna correct this problem. That's number one. Number two, another situation that was supposed to be done, while we're talking about modifications, and the town told us that we need to put the pipe, the pipes, and we need to do this, and need to do that, these were recommendations to stop the water at that time from surging down the hill. These were recommendations that both engineers, the town engineer and Joe Berger, came to agreeance to try to slow the water down, while we're taking a look at that. It's not supposed to be twisted around that we're saying now, well, we made all the modifications that the town wanted to make, and everything's fine. I have a booklet, and I started, and I'd be more glad to share it with you if you wanna see it. The, these people, the DJ here, had two feet of water in his basement, he, he's lived there, like he said, since two thousand twelve, and all of a sudden, during the initial construction of hospice, these people called, and we have records of it in the town hall, that there was getting, having flooding problems, and our answer from the engineer of record, Joe Berger, was, hey, give us time to get the retention pond shaped up, and get us time, we're, it's during construction. Well, here we are, three years later, and we're still arguing over the same thing, and nobody wants to admit they're wrong, but I know one thing. I asked Joe Berger and Pete Sotero, and these fine people here, and anybody else that wanted to come and take a walk with me during the pouring rain one day, I says, come on, guys, it's not rocket science, let's start at Danny's house and let's walk, and let's find out where this water's coming from. I had that conversation with Joe Berger numerous times. Joe did not wanna come out, he does not wanna walk the property, he didn't wanna see the issues, Pete Sotero came out on a Sunday. It was me, Pete Sotero, Danny Dejeu, I had the supervisor there, because I've been getting numerous phone calls from all the neighbors, and we walked from where it flooded at their house, walked to the retention ponds where the old height property is, they were full, walked up the stream, and at the top of the, top of the embankment where the new retention pond is, water's discharging out to beat out. It's not rocket science. Pete Sotero also tells me that there is no storage capacity. Now, we're only talking about, we only had three, four inches of rain. These retention ponds, the way that I understand it, supposed to be able to handle a fifty and a hundred-year storm. We're not even there yet, guys. When we get a big storm, these people are gonna be flooded out, so I don't understand why we keep going around and around and around, and not getting anything done. This project needs to be put on hold, the engineers need to sit down and get this rectified before we move any farther.
You need to repeat that at the planning board.
Uh, listen, we were at the planning board, and when I found out it was here, and you got a phone call today, Dave.
Yes.
You, you got, you got brought up to speed. I don't care if it's twenty parking spots or one parking spot, hospice, they're great people. They, they serve a great cause, but we can't have this, it's disrupting the whole neighborhood, and it's not gonna happen in my ward.
Michelle, do you think that the, uh, water that you helped move from the corner, that southwest corner, adds to this? I mean, is this?
I, I cannot speak because of a letter we received from the town.
Oh, okay.
And this is what I find interesting, we just got a letter today, or Pete Sotero just got a letter today, basically summarizing these twenty-one spots, how it's not gonna create any more water. I, I mean, this is getting jammed down our throat. Let's solve problem A before we go to problem B. That's all we need to do.
I will say that one of the, uh, factors that this board has to consider, uh, is whether there will be a detrimental, uh, impact uh, to the environment of the general neighborhood or district, uh, so that is a factor that this board is reviewing, obviously, with details for the site. That would be done by the planning board or the town's engineer. This board does not really have anything to do with the engineering. Uh, we would just be dealing with the result, correct?
We need to see it resolved, because clearly you're asking for a variance that adds ten percent to the.
Correct, yes, and it's, it's my understanding that you are in ongoing discussions with the town's engineer. Um, I, I think it might be wise for the board to invite him, uh, to give his take on this at the next meeting.
Yes, yeah. Has that meeting been set up between the engineers?
We had, we had numerous meetings, we had numerous.
But you're, you're scheduled for the planning board, right?
I haven't seen him.
No.
Whenever, whenever scheduled, we'll be there.
They, the last communication we got from the.
They're waiting to the square.
For the planning board was they needed that report.
Okay.
Which is what.
So the things, the things are going, but they don't go.
Just, just to let you know, last April, we submitted, you know, April twenty-four, we submitted something, and we didn't get anything back from the town in writing until November.
And what did you submit on April fourth?
April twenty-four.
On April twenty-fourth?
We submitted a, the option after this discussion with Dean in the field, but we didn't get anything back. And so we're, we're making sure that we cross all the i's and dot all the t's.
Okay, yeah, I, I think, as, as John has iterated, um, the, the program of hospice is great for this community, there's no question about that. This is a technical issue that we need to have solved, and I think for us to go forward with, and I understand why you would need more parking spaces and more, more people coming, um, we just need to resolve this, and we need to resolve it relatively soon. I mean, there's no reason not to be able to see what's, what's going on. So we're going to, uh, it's going to, it's gonna go to the planning board. Do we have, is there another, we don't have anybody else signed up?
Nobody else has signed up, unless there's someone who didn't sign up.
What we're going to do is continue this.
Okay, there's another.
Uh, yes, but you need to come up to the microphone.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Hi, my name is Donna Mitchell, and I live at forty-five East Dorsey Lane.
Okay.
I don't know where I am on the map or anything.
Let's find out, forty-five, I know you're.
Aye.
Okay.
Um, I'm fortunate enough that it's, hospice is not right in my backyard, but the light, I mean, maybe now when the trees are there, it won't be bad, but it's lit up like a, um, a birthday cake or something, though, you know, the lighting. Um, I do get water in my basement also, but I have, I put pallets up, so my freezer, my washer and dryer are all on the pallets, but that is an issue. Um, you know, I think hospice is great also, but you gotta think of the people around it.
Is the water in your basement a, a regular issue that you've had, or something?
When it rains hard, when it rains hard.
Okay.
How, how long have you been there?
Thirty-six years.
And does it, did it always do?
Well, we had a little, but this is not a little. This is, we had to. This is, we had to put pallets.
How about this year?
There was one big rain where we had it, that it came, yeah. I don't remember when, but I went downstairs and it was like, I was going to say the mice are making rafts down there, you know?
They aren't pirates, are they?
Yeah. But, so, you know, and I understand what everyone's going through because if that was in my backyard with all that light, it's like it's never nighttime.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I think, I border on you, I think, my house, on the Dorsey. Yes, but if I walk through my property, I go to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anything else?
No, nobody else signed up?
Anybody?
Counselor?
Okay. Obviously, we need to hear more from the planning board and so what we would like to do is continue this public hearing to, what do we have, June? June 25th, thank you. I would move that we continue the public hearing to June 25th, is it second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I think it's important, this clearly is an issue that is infecting a number of people and we are anxious to see the parties come together and see how we can resolve it. Thank you very much for coming.
Michelle? Contour map, would you have something like that?
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have that contour map when we go for our walk.
Yeah, is that a larger one too that we go?
Yeah, it's also gets contoured, but doesn't go all the way around the back.
Yeah.
So I'll... Okay. And do you have anything on lighting?
The lights are shown on here.
Wait, you're not adding what was installed.
Okay.
It's not, it's not as a part of what we're talking about, I know, but...
It's a planning board.
Right, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay. Now, move on to...
Look who's here.
Good evening.
Hi, Anderson. And you are looking to extend the previous granted variance. Madam Secretary, was a public hearing notice published?
Yes, in the Poughkeepsie Journal on May 21st, 2025.
I would move to open the public hearing for the Anderson Center. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Hello?
Hello, good evening. Brian Watts from Days to Co's Engineering here on behalf of Anderson.
How are we doing on your construction and your, all of this stuff?
We are still waiting for administrative approval of New York State DEC with the planning board for their site plan.
What, okay, and...
And that is just caused, it's a long administrative process and it's just going on and on.
So it's in the planning board now?
It was, the approval was extended from the planning board. We are working to get that signed actually the end of this week.
Okay.
Hopefully.
So you anticipate that?
I anticipate that being signed, yes. As long as the board willing, we can get the ZBA variances here reapproved tonight.
But it doesn't, it really does not impact, I think, the variance that we talked about, but it's a part of the whole package.
It's part of the whole package. Nothing that we've discussed, proposed or represented in any other meeting here has changed at all.
All right. Okay, is there anybody from the public? No, okay.
Kathleen, any written comments?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Then I would move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a resolution.
Okay, this is in regard to the resolution to extend the area variances for Anderson Center at 11 Hudson Lane, Stathsburg, New York. Today's date is May 28th, 2025. And this is Resolution 23-21Z-2. Whereas in 2024, the applicant Anderson Center Services Incorporated had submitted an application for area variances to allow the construction of a new entry gates consisting of walls, masonry pillars and one sign hereby known as the project at 11 Hudson Lane, Stathsburg, New York, identified as tax parcel number 133200-6066-02-778644 in the waterfront district hereby known as the site. Whereas the project is depicted on plans prepared by Days to Co's Engineering, PLLC, entitled amended entrance variance plan, which was revised on March 21st of this year, 2024, and the new entrance plan revised on March 14th, 2024. And whereas the applicant sought an area variance from the zoning law section 108-4.4A2 to allow wall heights as depicted on the submitted plans of 13 feet where height of 6 feet is allowed. Excuse me. And whereas the applicant sought an area variance for zoning law section 108-24.2F2B to allow letter height of 12 inches for sign where 10 inches is the maximum letter height permitted. And whereas the applicant sought an area variance for the zoning law section 108-5.15 to permit the front yard setback of 7 feet where 50 feet is required in the waterfront district. And whereas on May 15th, 2024, in accordance with the town code in the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRA, the planning board classified the project as type 2 action pursuant to 6 New York CRR 617.5C10. And whereas pursuant to section 239-M of the General Municipal Law and the project, excuse me, the project was referred to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development on February 1st, 2024, which responded on February 20, excuse me, February 1st, 2024, which responded on February 23rd, 2024, that the project was a matter of local concern. And whereas the duly noted public hearing was held on February 28th, 2024 and committed, excuse me, and continued to March 27th, 2024 during duly noticed meetings during which all those who wished to speak were heard. And whereas on May 22nd, 2024, the zoning board of appeals voted to grant the requested variances. And whereas pursuant to section 108-33.5F1, the authorized activity must have commenced within one year from the date of the issuance of the variances, otherwise the variances would be deemed revoked. And whereas the authorized activity has not yet commenced and the applicant has requested an extension for the granted variances, which are due to expire without such extension. And whereas pursuant to section 108-33.5F2, the zoning board of appeals may in its discretion grant an extension to the variance upon a written request from an applicant explaining the reason for the delay and after holding a public hearing on the extension request. And whereas the applicant, applicants have submitted such written requests for extension through a letter dated April 7th, 2025. And whereas a duly noticed public hearing regarding the requested extension was held on May 28th, 2025, at a duly noticed public meeting during which all those who wished to speak were heard. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 108-33.5F2 of the Hyde Park zoning law regarding the requested variance extension. One, since the grant of the variances on May 22nd, 2024, the applicants have worked to complete the design and submit, complete the design and supplemental review process for the new onsite wastewater treatment plant for the property, but have faced delays due to the manufacture of said facility. Two, applicant continues to work with the Dutchess County Department of Health in order to obtain required approvals. Three, applicant anticipates that construction will commence on the site within one year of this extension. Be it further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance extension subject to the following conditions. One, the conditions of the May 22nd, 2024 resolution shall remain unchanged. Two, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of this issuance, otherwise the variances granted on May 22nd, 2024 shall be deemed revoked. Three, payment of all fees and escrow.
Thank you. Ms. Daley has moved, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you poll the board, please?
Yes, Ms. Daley.
Yes.
Mr. Donley.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
And Chairman McHenry.
Yes. Okay, I don't want to see you again in a year.
I can promise nothing. I hope we don't see you again with this project.
No, I seriously hope, I hope you're able to...
You get out there on Saturdays and start doing that stone wall.
Stone by stone. And I'd like to thank the media guy for fixing the TV despite not needing it for my application. He was pulling his hair out trying to fix it for me.
Good, thank you, sir.
Tortarella, 202505Z, 2226 Cardinal Road. The applicant seeks a variance to allow a side yard setback of nine feet and up to 17 feet at the furthest point where 25 feet is required for the construction of a new garage attached to an existing single-family dwelling. Madam Secretary, was the public hearing notice published?
Yes, in the Poughkeepsie Journal on May 21st, 2025.
Okay, I would move to open the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome, sir.
Good evening, board members.
And your name, sir?
Gary Zingaro.
Gary?
Hey, Rich. Yeah, I'm representing the, as a construction manager, representing the homeowners.
Okay.
Fairly simple project.
Please speak into the microphone, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Was that you, Catherine? I thought I was, sorry. Yeah, this is just an addition of a two-car garage. They have quite a bit of space on the right side of their house. It's a lot of parking space right now. But obviously the house was a modular and they wanted to add a two-car garage with a little bit of a connector in between. I believe that somebody from the board had already gone and did a site visit.
I actually went by it today. I don't know if anybody has any of the other members.
No, I haven't. I've driven by, I haven't been on site.
Yeah. I know that none of the neighbors have any objections or anything.
I'm pretty familiar with it, though.
With that area?
Well, the trailer out front used to be owned by the people that built the log cabin behind.
I think it's sold.
Chahanovich's, this is like 20 years ago.
Yeah, I think they're gone, it's sold and there's new neighbors there now. So I don't believe there's any objections, I don't see anything, problems being caused by it.
I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
I see the shed on the back lot.
I saw that too when we got the survey done. That is a temporary, obviously a temporary building.
Yeah.
Could simply be moved back over to the property line.
And the connector between the garage and the house?
Yes.
Could, is it possible that that side of the garage could be left open and the garage could be moved over? And that nine feet could become 10 or 12?
The nine feet is actually, I don't, I think it's, I don't think it's 100% accurate. I originally thought that we were about 10 feet as we are now. The problem with the connector is that it's 10 feet wide and we had to do that for the stairs to work properly.
But if you take the wall down on the garage and just, you can put that inside the garage? Do you know what I mean?
Well, he needs the width of the garage though, because he has...
And you wouldn't really lose anything except for that little bit of walkway, right? That's on the, I guess that would be the west side of the stairs that are there.
Are you saying to make the connector smaller?
Yeah.
Actually, if you open up the garage and make, move it over just a little?
You know, originally that connector was going to be eight feet wide, which would have given us over 11 feet from the property line. I would think, you know, worst case scenario, we could do that. The customer, you know, the homeowner requested that we went a little wider.
Personal thing is that I had somebody come in and put a well next to my driveway, nine feet. Pissed me off.
Well, this shouldn't piss you off, Rich, I mean... I mean, is that going to make that much of a difference, you think, is to give it an extra foot? I think it's that much of a...
And it's just with my property line. In other words, I called the county and they said, oh, they got to do 10 feet. I said, they didn't.
Yeah.
And then nothing got done. So it sticks.
Well, as you probably know, I've been, you know, I've been a builder, contractor in Hyde Park for over 30 some odd years. We always try to do things to accommodate everybody.
Yep.
It's very important. I'd really like to keep this at 10 feet, but if it's going to create any problems or any delays, you know, we can bring it down to eight feet, give them 11 feet minimum on that property line.
For me, that would, that would make me happy.
Well, I'd like to make you happy.
And the shed, we could just...
The shed's definitely going to get moved back onto the property line, that's not an issue.
All right, so we change it from nine to 11. And the other would change from 17 to 19, roughly.
You know, one of the other things that we talked about too is moving the garage forward because obviously because of the angle of the property.
Little bit, yeah.
We could slide that garage forward a little bit. The reason why we put the jog on the back of the house, because it's so straight, the house, the existing house itself, it would look kind of funny if we continued straight across the back of the house. Being in the back, I don't think it'd be that big of a deal. And I wouldn't want to do that in the front of the house, it just wouldn't look right. You want to have, you know, that depth and it's still...
So slide the garage forward.
Yeah, we could do that, we could slide it forward a foot or two to try to, you know, gain another foot and keep the 10-foot. I mean, would you be happy if I got you 10 feet from the property line for that?
Yeah.
Well, it's the, the standard is the minimum that you need to obtain the benefit that you're seeking.
Right, yeah.
So if you have the ability, feasibility to shift this somehow to minimize those variances, you know, you should provide a set of those plans to the board.
That would be good.
If that's your intention.
Yeah. I mean, I could definitely do that, I could move this garage forward. I'd rather do that and give you 10 feet on the setback instead of, you know, shrinking down the connector. Because it'll make it very difficult for the stairs to work properly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking that there might be some building code issues with moving that stairs inside the garage, some separation issues, some architectural issues.
Fire or something.
Yeah, so I think you really would lose space in there. So I would caution against that.
So maybe moving it...
Bring it forward. Yeah, I don't think, you know, having a straight line across the back or even a one-foot jog versus a three-foot jog. You know, as long as we have some separation back there, I think it would, it would look better. But again, being in the back of the house, if I have to come straight across, so be it. But I can, I could definitely make that work so we have a minimum of 10 feet from the property line.
Including the overhang. Be careful.
Yeah, I think...
That's a good point, yeah.
Gary?
Yes.
I think your, I think your idea of that compromise is very good. Then if you could just come back with a new set of drawings, I think we can, we can get it moving through. So we'll just automatically, we'll set it up for next month and we'll get it going.
No way to, no way to come in tomorrow or next week?
Sorry, before you close the public hearing, or hold it over, I do have a question. Is it, is the addition going to be entirely where the existing paved drive is?
He doesn't have a paved driveway.
Okay.
It's a dirt driveway.
It's dirt, okay. I couldn't tell from personal access.
And one of the things too is that's another benefit of putting in the garage is that he has, you know, a couple of vehicles, which he's parking in the dirt right now. So having the garage where he can pull them inside the garage, I think it'll make the property look a lot better.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, next one.
I would say get the board a new set of plans showing the changes that you've indicated here tonight. And the board can consider them. I think that's a... I think that's a good change, if you're willing to make it.
Okay.
Okay.
If that's the best we can do, that's what I'll do.
Yeah, I think it'll, yeah.
All right.
All right.
So, to give you ten feet, everybody would be happy with the ten feet, slide the garage forward. This way, we don't have to come back in July.
No, no July.
No, July, we're not, we're off for the summer.
We're going to go away.
Yeah.
Go, go consider it.
All right, that's simple enough. So, that's something I'll definitely, we'll make that change.
Okay. So, we then entertain a motion to.
Excuse me? Do I have a public comment?
You got to open up for a public comment.
I'm sorry.
I have a written comment. It's very brief. May I please read it into the record?
Okay.
Hi, folks. I can't make the meeting on Wednesday, May twenty-eighth regarding the yard setback for Brenton Colleen Tortorella at two-twenty-six Cardinal Roll Road. But me and my mom live just below them at the bottom of the hill at two-thirty-one Cardinal. And we have no problem with them wanting to build a garage. Go for it. Thank you. From Jeffrey Semantik.
Okay. Good. Nice. Okay.
Thank you.
Then I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to June twenty?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, I'm sorry. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I think we'll, let's get it going.
I will see you on the twenty-fifth. Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Nice to see you.
Seconded.
Okay.
I do. When I was driving a bus, I was.
But if I have two hands on the momma, I can't wave otherwise.
Who seconded that motion to continue?
I did.
Okay.
Wait, I need the first and the second. I'm sorry.
Okay. Who moved to, I think Dave moved Jerry continue, or seconded.
I seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Leroy, sixty-seven Havlin Road, Poughkeepsie. Welcome. Finally, yes. Okay, you're, you're looking to permit a side yard setback of sixteen feet, one inch, where twenty is required for a construction and placement of a deck attached to a single-family dwelling. Madam Chairman, Madam Secretary, was there a public hearing notice published?
Yes, in the Poughkeepsie Journal on May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
And I would move to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome. Can you just give us your name for the record so we've got it officially?
Chrissy Leroy, sixty-seven Havlin Road.
Neil Machino, sixty-eight Boardman Road, Poughkeepsie.
Good. Welcome.
Steven Leroy, I'm with her.
Good, good. Okay. Tell us a little bit about what you're, what you'd like to do.
So, my, our whole goal is to make the deck and the stairway safe. My elderly mother lives with us. And she has trouble getting into our house inside because the rise on the step is too deep for her. So, our goal is to put on this, well, our deck obviously needs to be changed because it's not safe. But our goal is to put this long stairwell down the side with this, with the shorter rise so she can, you know, get into the house easier.
Their stairs, they're right now. Are they, I mean, right up to the deck?
Yes.
Yes.
She can do the stairs.
But those are too steep.
Correct. She, she could not do the ones on the existing deck. A, the, the deck is not safe. I walk on it and it literally shakes against the house.
And that's the way she would come into the house?
She comes in right now into the front of the house, but the inside stairs, we have a raised ranch.
Okay.
The, the rise is just too tall for her. She, she struggles to get up them.
And her bedroom is on the second.
Correct. Yeah, she's upstairs. Correct.
All right.
So, so this would be a shorter rise for her to get into the house coming to the back, shorter and deeper. Shorter and deeper.
And would lead right to a. Extension of the deck wider?
It doesn't change the width of the deck. It just shifts the deck over four feet to clear the side of the house.
It allows for a staircase access right from the driveway and walk right up to a staircase. The, the footprint of the deck gets shifted from being flush with the edge of the house to being shifted over to accommodate the staircase that will go directly to the driveway. So, she can come out the back of the house and easily get to a car in the driveway.
So, does that become a handicap entrance?
I suppose so, yeah. It's, you know, it's not a ramp. It's a staircase, but, but, you know, more accessible for someone who's handicapped. It'll be a very long staircase as opposed to, you know, a shorter, steeper one.
Right. And it gives her a railing on both sides, where currently, right now, inside of our house, there's only a railing on the one side.
Is there any exceptions for a handicap stairway, you know?
And I don't, I don't think the stair is in the setback. It's just a piece of the deck.
It's just a very, very back piece of the.
Yeah, one like corner sliver because the property's on an angle cutting across like the back corner of the deck.
Is, is there a way to construct the deck so that you're not within the setback at all?
It would not be the best for the look of the deck, you know, the best for the homeowners' enjoyment of the deck to be used as, as we have in the plans. It would be possible to like shave that corner off the deck. It would look pretty weird and the angles of the joists would be cut quite steeply.
We did have somebody a few months ago or last month that, that took a chainsaw out because they were over.
Just over, yeah, yeah, yeah. I try to, you know, make it more of a pleasing, you know, structure, too, and not have a crazy weird angle just to, you know, a couple of feet on the setback on the back corner.
I mean, even to minimize it even further, just to round off that back corner somehow?
Do you have a fence around the deck?
The deck itself? No, the, the deck has railing on it.
Railing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it could be rounded with some difficulty, but I suppose it could be done. You know, another thing that could be done is the footprint can be shifted over one foot. We gave one foot clearance from the chimney to the staircase of that, you know, if they had to do repointing or anything, you know, it wasn't right up against it. So, we kind of like squeeze it as far over as we could and still leaving access to the chimney. But the staircase, like we said, is not really in the way. It's more the footprint of the deck. You know, I was trying to give them a better deck. And it does encroach on the, you know, the setback a little bit. And I was just hoping we can kind of keep it like this and not do any weird augmentations to a, to a deck to make it happen.
What is the little square that's off to the right of the deck?
That square is a shed that's been there for about fifty years.
Yeah, my.
Is, is there a, is there a small stream on your.
Yes.
Oh, a small stream that floods our whole front yard. You want to talk about flooding.
Does it, does it, does it go from this side over this way?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's me.
When I go by in the bus, I could not determine which way the water was going.
Yeah, it flows from, from up above. You know, I think they put a lot of fill-in up above recently.
Yeah.
And ever since then, it's.
Changes it?
Changes, yeah. But I, I maintain it, so keep it going down the, down the way.
Okay.
I mean, could you even shift it over and have the stairs come up parallel to the deck?
You don't want to have a cookout with me, do you?
I'm just, the board has to look at the, the least variance possible.
The stair entrance would be.
On the side. Like a nipple coming off the main body. I was just discussing like if this wouldn't go through, ways I can try to, to make it happen. So, it seems like the, the property line right at the corner of the deck existing on the plans, like the property line cuts in right at that corner and then works its way inwards towards the deck on the back. If I shifted the whole thing over one foot, which would put the staircase up against the chimney, which is what I didn't want to do. Because then, you know, even if I just have a nipple, part of that nipple is still encroaching. And it's also less pleasing, you know, like they can have a nice square deck where all is usable as opposed to, you know, shaving a lot of it off of that, you know, but I'm at your mercy, so.
What are you saying? Yeah, if you bring the stairs up to here and you move the whole deck over, right? So, the whole, and the entrance is here. In other words, the stairs come up. A landing.
How close is the, the nearest house, the property?
On that property line, the house is like hundreds of feet away. It's not even.
Woods between there and lawn?
Forests, too, even like, yeah. It's, it's not even close to the house, so. Other than the imaginary line, it's not, you know, anything.
If you, if you, if you move the stairs, if you took that foot between, you've got the, I see your chimney there.
Yeah.
You move the stairs over a foot and the deck over a foot.
It would be like right up against the chimney. So, if they ever needed to do anything to that, like repoint something, then it wouldn't have any space for it, which is why I kicked it over.
A live feed.
That's the first.
So, are you just adding to the deck or are you?
We are, we're just adding that staircase.
We're going to take it down and shift it.
Oh, okay.
I'm rebuilding the existing staircase. I'm tearing it down and building a new one with a shifted footprint.
Well, as you can tell right now, this is all forest, the side that's in question. It's just, there's nothing over there. The house sits all the way to the front.
Right.
And of course, this is, my other neighbor right here.
Mr. Green.
Back there. But, yeah, and my other neighbor sits at the top of it and past it.
Okay.
But the deck is in bad shape. You can kind of see. I've been replacing boards here and there, but.
It's time for new ones.
Yeah, it isn't, it isn't safe for her to even use her relator out there at all.
I mean, it seemed like the, the existing plans that we have drawn up were like the best way to, to achieve this.
This one, I think.
Yeah, I can go with this.
Because it's less than twenty percent.
Yeah, we don't ever, we never.
Oh, okay.
When we can put one together. So, any other comments from the public? Yes, sir? Would you like to make a comment? Please. Oh, well, I can hear you, but I'd like you to use the microphone because so they can put it in, you know.
In the record.
In the record.
Oh, yeah. Let's get it in the record. I apologize for coming, leaving, and coming back. But we had a fellow firefighter just pass away.
Your name?
I live, pardon me.
Your name, sir?
Oh, my name is John Green.
John Green.
No E on the end, just like money.
Oh, yeah, okay.
No E on the end of money.
Okay, I'll make sure.
I live, I live on Two Idol Wild Drive, which is a side yard from where these people live.
Okay.
And I would hope and pray that you would do the right thing. If you went up and looked, okay, the other house is way out, way out of reach and we have to help this neighbor. She gave her life to Salvation Army helping people. Now, she needs help.
That's very commendable.
I've tried to help her. Please. There's, if he was up against my property line for Dottie, I'd say, do it. And this is so far away, so please consider it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So.
I'm going to, we'd like to move in and have the resolution, put the resolution together and get it done in the next two weeks or something.
You're going to respond this, this evening?
Okay.
Going to move for the floor, moving up the lift, finalize the resolution in the next week or so.
Well.
Okay.
Stay me aside.
We're reinventing something.
We're reinventing everything. It's a, it's a new one for me.
What I would suggest to you is you can close the public hearing and move on this the next week. I'll have the resolution.
Close it and then move on that.
Because you have sixty-two days to render a decision after you close the public hearing. The next meeting is going to be on the top of it. I don't give you time to make the resolution. We'll have the factors. Because you have to discuss the factors.
We have to discuss the factors. Those things on the record. Close the record. They have to be on the record. They have to be discussed before we can.
So, my suggestion is to close the public hearing this evening. I'll do the resolution the next meeting. That way we can redo it.
Okay.
I think we have a resolution to get you, get you moving. We would, we're going to close the public hearing.
I make a resolution that we close the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion.
Just a second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay. Now, the board has sixty-two days to render a decision on this. The decision will be made at the next meeting in June. Okay?
Do we need to give you new plans?
No.
No, the plans are staying.
No, we understand. We need to get it done.
Okay. All right. That's my birthday, June twenty-fifth.
We can say you'll be pleased.
I get to see you guys on my birthday, so.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-one, again, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we've got one more. All right. I'm going to not pronounce this right. Michael McCucci. Seeking to allow a side yard setback of nine feet where twenty-five is required and allow a rear yard setback of twenty-four or fifty is required to allow a height of twenty-five feet where twenty-two feet is the maximum for an accessory structure. And also to allow a stream corridor setback of fifty-nine feet where a hundred feet is required for the construction of a detached garage associated with a single-family dwelling. Madam Secretary, was the public hearing notice published?
Yes, in the Poughkeepsie Journal on May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Move to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, welcome, sir.
Hello.
Tell us about your adventure.
My name is Michael McCucci. I live at sixteen Riverview Circle, Poughkeepsie, New York, one-two-six-oh-one. My property is very, not, it's not defined by a square rectangle. There's many angles to my property. And my house is a two-story structure that is right up to the drainage easement that was created in the eighties when they did Route Nine. My septic is to the left side of the house where we tried to fit the, the garage in to match or be close to the setbacks. This, I can't do that, obviously, because of the septic. So, we moved the garage over. I would just like to have a place where I can park my vehicles, keep my garbage cans without the raccoons destroying them, and my lawnmower. And my house is built in eighteen sixty-three, so there's very limited storage. The basement gets wet every time it rains, which we're working on managing that. But just really, just need dry storage and, you know, a place to keep my vehicle because the trees are very big around my house and they drop limbs every so often. I've even had to have, you know, the roof of my car repaired from, you know, after a storm. So, it would just be nice to be able to keep my garbage cans inside where the raccoons won't destroy everything and my lawnmower and vehicles to protect them from the large trees that surround my property.
Just to clarify, so your septic is located between the house and the garage where it's proposed?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Like behind the garage?
Yes, it would. Well, it would be in between the house and the garage, kind of behind it. Off to the right diagonal angle.
Would you mind just showing on the set of plans?
Yeah, there's a bay window on the house.
Yeah, I see the bay window.
And that's where the septic line comes out, right, right here. Okay, so this area here is the septic and this is the proposed location for the garage.
Do you have, do you have a concrete tank?
I don't, I don't know if I have a concrete tank. What I did is I went to the back corner of the garage and I dug a three-foot, twelve-inch round hole down three feet to see if I hit the septic or came close to it or anything, and we did not.
So, you're.
So, it's so old there, I don't know if there's even a record of what's there or what is.
Clay tiles.
Well, going out, it's all cast iron.
Oh, okay.
So, your septic is here and you want to move the garage to.
Correct.
Here?
Yes. Yep.
You want to build a garage there?
Yes, we want to build a garage there, correct. Yep.
What color is your house?
Blue.
Okay. Is there a fancy, is there a white and black house next to it?
A white and black one?
Up on the hill.
Up on the hill is the old Roosevelt Brothers' house.
Not the White House.
There's a raised ranch in between that house and mine that just sold this past year.
Okay, you have a, you have a small, I thought I went by it today. You, you have a small entrance in the front, right? You have, you have a fence in the front?
Uh, yes. There, this is the entrance right here. There's a porch.
Where the street is, where are we?
This is the street up here.
There's Riverview Circle over here.
Oh, wait. Oh, what am I looking at? Okay, yeah, this is. Okay, yeah, this is the porch and entrance to the house right here.
Okay, so this is the corner, okay, all right.
Yeah, that's the road. See how the property?
And you got a, you got a fence, yeah, you got a fence along here.
Yeah, the, yes, that was all there already and there's a fence here, but it's on the neighbor's property.
And yours is a two-story house.
And mine's a two-story, so the, yeah, the garage will be considerably less.
So you're gonna come in here, come in this way?
Yes, yep, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Right now, you just park in here?
Uh, well, I'm parking here actually.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And then there's a circle driveway, so I obviously park my cars in the driveway.
Okay.
So I'd like to have a garage there because the critters.
Entrance this way or this way?
Uh, no, it's gonna come in this way.
Okay.
So this is a circle with a big oak tree in the center and this is the one that drops all the tree, you know, drops limbs and then everything all around is all big trees.
Okay, so it's here.
This is right up, this is a deck off the back of my house and, uh, it actually cantilevers over the edge of the, the drainage easement.
Because it goes like this?
Yes, correct.
This the, where's our creek? Here?
Uh, yeah, the creek is down here, correct. It all goes right around this way and down. Oh, actually.
It's right here. Wosniak.
Oh, is that it all the way over there?
Yeah. So what about putting your garage here? No, I'm only kidding.
Uh, yeah, no, this is all very steep.
Yes, it is.
And the drainage goes just like this. This is the creek right here. Comes out and comes right around, because my deck literally overlooks the gabion cages for the, uh, the drainage that comes through.
It's a gabion wall here, yeah.
Yes, yep.
So this has been visible my whole life when I've come up Route Nine?
Yes, you always see that house, yep. So it's pretty, it's an amazing house, it's beautiful, the gingerbread and everything. Um, I'd like to see if I could mimic it on the garage too, but I'll have to see, it's.
Could we, could we come for a site visit?
Of course. Um, there's actually a bluestone slab sticking out of the ground right here that has a big cast iron ring on it that the stage.
Horses, horses, yeah, yeah.
So, sorry, uh, just a quick question. So could you shift this a little closer to the house without affecting your septic?
Well, there's a drain right here.
Okay.
At the bottom of the driveway, there's a, a drain, the water goes right to it, everything goes in the driveway and then it comes out in the, over here behind the deck.
Is it gonna be a slab?
Yes.
So you put the drain underneath?
Um, well, I wanted, I was gonna do a frost wall because if I do a monolithic slab, then I've got to heat it.
Yep, yep.
So I don't know, can I heat it? I didn't propose heating, it was really just gonna be for storage with electric to it. Um, but, uh, there's an old.
Slabs are nice when they're warm and you stand on them.
Yeah, there's an old grate here that goes down, you know.
It may, it may come out over here.
It, it comes out over here behind the, the deck, yeah, past the wall. There's a old fence here that I wish I could do repair on, but it's not my property. It's starting to fall apart. So I guess I can call highway displays and see if they give me permission to.
Oh, is that what's there?
It's getting to a point where it's gonna start collapsing because one of the beams or the supports is leaning back. So, and then every year the, the vines grow all over the whole thing and it just puts a lot of weight on it, you know? But it's not mine, I, I don't want to touch it without.
I, I don't remember a billboard there, is there?
No, there's nothing.
They just own the property still?
They just own the property and it's all landlocked and they can't.
Can't do anything.
Can't put anything there anyway. I don't know if it's a tax deduction or what, but they're paying taxes on it and it's not even usable.
Water is flowing this way, right?
Yeah, the driveway comes around and it's tire on this side and about two-foot elevation or eighteen-inch elevation. And right about here is that drain that goes underneath.
Down here.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's why we tried to hug it this way and we also want to enter the garage from this side.
Yeah.
So moving it this way, you know, I don't want to infringe on the roots of this oak tree because I think it's about as old as the house.
Okay, yeah, you don't want to.
To be honest, it's huge.
You want to keep the tree.
And I want to keep the tree, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, okay.
You know what I mean?
Well, let's set up, we'd love to come out and.
She's nodding.
See it.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good. Yeah, let's take a look, yeah. All right, good.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thanks for the info, boy, you're very detailed on it.
Yeah, and it will.
Yeah, well, I mean, I love the house, it's great.
So we'll continue the, continue public hearing for next year, or next year. I'm sorry, next month. And we'll have it visited by then and we should be in good shape.
All right. Okay.
Fantastic.
So we have a motion to continue the public hearing to June twenty-fifth?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Good, we're in good shape. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for waiting so long.
Yeah, thanks for waiting long, yeah.
You were very patient.
Little excitement there.
Well, you know, patience rules the world.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, we have any, uh, other business tonight?
No.
Ms., Ms. Moss, anything that you would like us to consider?
No.
All right, then I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
I didn't, I, I, you didn't make the motion.
Oh. Make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, uh.
Do we have a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I think so, yeah.